Bribe him because he'll get up like two stairs and then he'll stop. So I'm bribing his shit out of him. I'm bribing his shit out of him, get his ass up the stairs, you know.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the March 7, 2022 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order if everyone would please rise for the Pledge Allegiance of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Burchay.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Marcus Zepidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we'll proceed with the agenda items. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on February 22, 2022. Motion would be in order?
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the city council meeting, minutes of February 22, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And you also have before you the minutes of the Crest Hill Work Session held on February 28, 2022. Motion would be in order?
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of the Work Session held on February 28, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Burchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving along to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items to say.
Any questions of city attorney? Thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two items before you tonight. The first one is regarding Human Resources Manager position. I provided you with a memo that I'll review. Well-run organizations are capable of candid self-evaluation. Our commitment to continuous improvement, the duty of my positions to direct the efficient and productive administration of all city departments to improve operations and workflow, streamline procedures, become more efficient, reduce costs, and provide exceptional services to residents. Having observed the organization and its operations, it's my assessment that it is necessary to restructure some operations, modify job responsibilities, or reassign tasks to meet the business needs of the organization and better serve the community. One area in need of restructure is the Human Resources Manager position. The functions of this position can be restructured to better meet our needs. Typical municipality of our size does not have a dedicated Human Resources position. Instead, they have an Assistant Manager position that may have some management-level Human Resources responsibilities with other HR functions spread among other positions. So for that reason, I feel we'd better serve the city if we restructured and reassigned some duties, reassigned some of the HR duties that we now have to other individuals, therefore no longer needing the position of Human Resources Manager. So I would recommend the position be eliminated. You have before you tonight the ordinance that would eliminate that position.
Some move is presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alder Woman Gazal for the ordinance discontinuing the office of the Human Resource Manager replacing chapter 2.30 of the Crest Hill City Code. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Abstained.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchay.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1894.
The other item I have for you is the City Center Audio-Visual System Proposal. We discussed this at the work session last week. This past week, after that work session, I met with Low Voltage Solutions, who's here in the audience tonight, along with other staff members at the city center. We reviewed their proposal and walked through the facility and identified some changes that we needed to make. And based on that, we were able to see some cost savings. And as a result of that, the price changed. So what I gave you in the packet on Friday wasn't the correct proposal at that time because LVS didn't have the final number. So I sent that to you today. And you should have been at the dais. And that number actually was a little incorrect. The actual number for the base system total is $308,930. And then there's also an option to include the assisted living system, assisted listening system, sorry, for the council chambers. So what you have is a revised proposal. I'll have Eric from LVS come up in a moment, go through the proposal with you. This was a proposal. It wasn't a formal bidding process. So since it was a proposal, the council would have to waive competitive bidding. So the resolution you have before you tonight waives competitive bidding. And just so you know, in order for that to be approved, it requires two-thirds vote in order to approve the competitive bidding. So with that, I'll ask Eric to come up. Eric's over from Low Voltage Solutions. He'll go through the proposal and then answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for taking the time. There's a lot of details in here, so I'm going to try to keep it as basic and rudimentary as we possibly can here for you. If at any point in time you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop and ask. Happy to do so. We're covering quite a bit of facility space within your new facility, which ironically is right up the road from us. You're the city of neighbors. We are fortunate to be your neighbor, literally right up the road from you guys. We will be delivering 21st century, state-of-the-art, fully digital, fully commercial, fully reputable, three-year-backed warranty manufacturers with technology throughout a variety of different spaces. Some of these spaces, starting with some of the more basic solutions, are going to be some information signage, display monitors in certain strategic lobby areas consisting of PC-driven content, delivering high-definition, actually ultra-high-definition content to those who will be visiting the new facility. As part of the facility as well, you'll have an executive session, breakout room, where you will have integrated audio, ultra-high-definition displays, cameras, microphones, all to be able to use the latest and greatest digital conferencing technologies via Zoom, Teams, or any other sort of agnostic conferencing capabilities. Systems are pretty much set it and leave it. We did our best to make sure that any of the smaller conference room or the breakout session technologies, that the use case of the technology was consistent throughout most of the facility. So you'll also have the ability to just do basic presentations. Come in and bring your laptop in, bring your iPad, bring your Android device, connect it right to the display, be able to engage and interact with each other through sharing content. That is also consistent of a variety of conference room spaces throughout the facility. There are one, two, three, four, five conference room systems, one of which is actually going to be portable within the facility. Again, all very, very similar technology, very similar use case intuitive control, and again incredibly state-of-the-art and latest and greatest. Yes, ma'am.
When you say portable, is this the one that's going to have the capability to bring it outside and use it like in the gardens and stuff?
Yes, ma'am. There is one that is going to be on a mobile cart. It was originally going to be in room 333, I think, which got converted to an office. And we have since turned that system, which was once integrated, now into a portable roll-around system.
And the information displays, are those going to be like televisions that have a scrolling scroll on them, similar to advertisement, but our information?
It will have the capability of doing so, yes. So we are providing the displays, all of the back-end infrastructure, so your network infrastructure, which is actually already in place, your power, and a video connection. And then there will be a source device, probably a PC provided by IT, that is going to be able to provide whatever content you guys would like.
Almost like a closed-circuit TV.
Yes.
Okay, we have those where I work.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there a distance it has to be before, or otherwise it goes too far and you lose it?
I'm sorry, say that again, sir.
You have to be a certain distance from the base in order to take it out there, the portable one?
No, as long as it has a local connection to the network and a power jack, you're pretty much good to go. So, yeah, again, the goal to make this technology not overly complicated, but something that is certainly going to stand the test of time for you guys. So that was the overall goal. Again, that technology is going to be consistent with room 139, which is your breakout room in a variety of conference room spaces. I do wish to outline, though, too, that the executive session room specifically does have a recording element. Obviously, we understand that there's to be the ability to record audio, so there will be an audio appliance to record that as well. I'm saving the big guy for last, so please bear with me. There is a community room, which is going to be off of your brand-new council chambers. The community room will again have very, very similar conferencing technologies as the other conference rooms, but also serve as a overflow room during the council chamber meetings. So any content that is being displayed on the displays within the council room chambers and any audio contained therein will be able to overflow into that executive room. So that community room will be its own standalone space and augment the city council chambers. I also wanted to point out, too, that there was one information display area. It's kind of an intermix of integration here. There is one foyer area, I think it's 200, maybe call it Information Display 200. But that area is also going to be an overflow from the council chambers. There will be two speakers and a display that will be able to serve anything that's going on during these meetings out into that area as well. So there's another sizable piece of integration that's going to be coming in with that particular informational display, just to make you guys aware. So any questions so far? Again, I want to try to keep it high level, very basic, and then I'll move on to the big guy for you. Okay, moving into the council chambers, which is what we are sitting in right now. Obviously, you're going to be in a brand-new facility, a room that's going to be about five, six times the size of what this is right now, and you're going to see a lot of differences. Obviously, in front of you, you see wired microphones. In our instance, we have proposed a fully digital wireless solution instead. So instead of having these gooseneck microphones in front of you, we very, very small boundary microphone, each with their own unique mute button. So again, serving the exact same function for voice uplift within the space and for any sort of far-end audio when it's being broadcasted out. Those microphones are going to be served a great purpose. Drilling down on that element specifically, we chose to go wireless in this particular instance because the infrastructure that was needed to wire up individual microphones throughout the new facility would require some pretty extensive gutting of some work that's already been done. There's a lot of conduit that was needed. So we ended up going wireless in this particular instance. The good news for you guys, it's probably still a pretty substantial cost savings by going wireless in that we're pulling significantly less cable. The infrastructure is much less in-depth. The use case of the microphones, obviously, you know, very similar still. So, yeah, we went with the wireless solution instead of the hardwired goosenecks in this particular instance. Throughout the facility, if you can kind of imagine this space on a much grander scale, there's going to be four displays sized to 85 inches on either side of the room that are going to be able to pull out and pull and swivel and pivot, be able to accommodate both who are sitting out here, both sitting at the dais on both sides of the room. We've got a considerable number of speakers within the space, too. There's going to be plenty of audio covering the public as well as those speaking here. We didn't want to put any speakers over you guys specifically because we didn't want to introduce any sort of feedback loop within the space itself.
You know, that being said.
Yes.
I know this room was originally designed to where, you know, if somebody down there was talking, the speaker would be on and vice versa.
Sure.
Is that something that can be considered? Because it's a huge space. We might not be able to necessarily hear what's going on.
Yeah, so what's going to end up happening, obviously, we're going to be fine-tuning this system. To kind of put it in perspective, in your new council chambers, I mean, you've got one, two, three, four, five, maybe five, six speakers in this space, you're going to have 16 in your new facility. And it's broken out into two zones, one on the left, one on the right, evenly distributed throughout. And the gain and our volume structure that is going to be programmed for this system is going to be more than ample for anybody at the dais to be able to hear anybody who is speaking from one side of the room to the other, if that answers your question, sir.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate that.
Yep.
As far as the wireless microphones, what are we talking battery life for those?
Very good question. 12 hours on a single battery. We've also provisioned the necessary charging elements for these microphones. So when they're done with the microphones, they get placed into a charging station, and we have backup batteries for you that are going to be fully charged. So 12 hours.
What do these microphones actually look like? Do they sit on the dais here?
They will sit on the dais, yes, sir. If you could kind of imagine a computer mouse, if you will, a little bit thinner, about the same footprint, maybe a little thinner, black, the mic elephant, I'm sorry, the mic element is right in front of there with a small little mute button right on top of it.
As one of those things where it is, this is obviously directed right here. Is it one of those that's picking up me, Mark, and Joe on my microphone, or is it?
It will, definitely depending on where it's placed, it may have the ability to pick up the person next to you or the person to the right or left of you. In the perfect position of the gain structuring, again, the programming is intended for that microphone to be primarily for the person sitting right in front of it.
Now, when I was taking a tour at the new city center, you know, there's data lines and there's conduit and outlets for every single person, you know, at the dais.
Sure.
So there's not enough space to have a wired system through there?
As of right now, no, there is not. That's what LVS has identified based on how the build-out was achieved.
And that's all because of the fact that this was not started before the building was finished, and you had the walls and everything up, and you couldn't run the wiring.
I could speculate that. I don't know that for certain. I don't know what the circumstances were leading up to that, but it's believed so, yes.
Eric, could you give us a little bit of background about LVS?
Absolutely, yeah. Low Voltage Solutions is a commercial audiovisual low-voltage infrastructure contractor. We have been in business since 1997, founded by Gary St. Sin and our late founder, John Facet. We've been serving this general area since pretty much 1997. Have expanded considerably, both in the Chicago and local Chicagoland markets. We serve strictly commercially. We are not a residential contractor by any stretch of the imagination. From an audiovisual contracting, that's what I speak to. I am the division manager for audiovisual. We are backed by some of the highest certified engineers, programmers that the industry has to offer. So all services and all professional services that we'll be providing are going to be done by Low Voltage Solutions. So that's pretty much us in a nutshell. We've also, I think, Justin, please correct me if I'm wrong, we do dabble in the security side of everything, too. We've also, I believe, had some, we've done a lot of the work, I think, at the facility thus far, too, from a low-voltage infrastructure standpoint, so.
The security, you mean?
Do I need to walk up?
Yes. Come on up, Justin, I'm sorry.
So I was the project manager on the structure and cabling side of things for the city, network cabling. So when we're talking about conduit sizes and this and that, I was part of the infrastructure and putting those cables in. So right now, there's like, there's an inch and a half conduit leading to the dais, and we've got like, we've got 12 category six cables running down there. So conduit size, we're very choked. I know that's been a very big talking point on the wireless mics. But on this point, we'll be tearing cables out to put cables back in and doing twice the amount of work and trying to avoid that with the wireless solution.
Let me ask you something. These microphones, they're digital, then you can't, you don't have to talk to record, do you?
You could sit just as you are right now, and it's going to do the exact job that it's...
Can I say something? Either one of these guys, that thing will pick it up?
Unless it's muted, yes, sir.
Oh.
Yes.
What about if he has his papers on top of it?
Obviously, we'd have to move the papers to get it out of the way. So, yeah, obviously, there's got to be a clean shot to the microphone in a perfect situation. I do know that, very similar to what you guys have here, there is a ledge, too, where the microphones could potentially be placed if you need the work surface. I mean, these microphones, again, they are programmable. Each microphone will have the ability to be controlled uniquely muted. All microphones could be muted and controlled at the exact same time. So that's kind of the beauty of this particular system. At the end of the day, you know, it's just a different footprint, but same functionality is what we were looking to achieve without having to add new infrastructure, tear up the ground, run conduits beneath the conduit, or I'm sorry, between beneath the concrete of the foundation, which is, I think, ultimately what's going to end up having to be done if we chose to go a hardwired solution in this space, so. And it also means the difference of us pulling about 15 cables versus three. That was another piece of it, too. So if you could kind of imagine, I'm sure many of you guys have seen what a wireless access point looks like. The receivers for these microphones look like little wireless access points. They'll be out of sight, out of mind, in your ceiling, picking up the frequencies from the microphone so that everything is working absolutely beautifully. So we'll be able to do that very, very easily from above your ceiling down to the AV head and closet that you guys would have here in this facility, so.
And what is the assisted listening capability?
Okay, so yeah, assisted listening, high level, is intended to serve those who are hearing impaired, is what that is. So we propose that as an ad option for ultimately the city to be able to make the decision. LVS's stance on it is that it's proper building code to be able to accommodate a small, I think it's 2% of the occupancy of the space, to give them a earpiece to be able to hear very, very closely what the audio that is being spoken during these meetings. Again, catering to those who are hearing impaired. And in the particular use case instance, someone who is hearing, there would be signage posted within the room itself that this system will have this capability. And if they need that assist, they would need to request for that little earpiece to wear, and then they would have a little side piece, a little receiver on the side that they would be able to raise and lower a volume on to be able to hear the audio better. That's what ALS is, so.
That's obviously something that's interchangeable to the user, some type of, I mean, going into somebody's ear, it's one of those things that can be cleaned properly.
Yes, absolutely. And there's also a lanyard piece of it, too, that kind of wraps around the neck, too, so. Yes, sir. So drilling down even further, obviously, there is an integration to the recording and broadcasting capabilities out to a local YouTube channel here within, we've been coordinating with the gentleman who's currently running your meeting behind the scenes here right now. So there'll be a nice element to that. There's a bunch of what I call brain equipment behind the scenes that are going to be sending all these various signals in and out to all these various devices. I don't want to bore you with all of that, but know that all that equipment is right there and ready to receive. One of the other things that you're going to have the capability is of, which you don't currently have here today, is the ability to plug in at a variety of different locations, a laptop or a source device into various locations throughout the facility. So we're going to have four locations for a hardwired HDMI connection to be able to display content up onto the monitors within the space and be heard through the speakers, if so chosen to do so. The locations include two podium locations within the new council chambers. There will be one at the dais, and there will also be one near a technician's area off on the side. You will also have the ability to do the exact same thing wirelessly by plugging in a small little dongle, USB dongle into your device and hitting a button and being able to blast content up wirelessly as well, and you'll have that capability. Those that are going to be running the system while these meetings are occurring, there will be a portable iPad that's going to be programmed, again, custom programmed for this specific space, to be able to manipulate, maneuver all microphones, be able to switch input sources, raise and lower volume, and record. As we have a recording device, too, that's going to be provisioned for you guys. We'll be able to route that information, as I mentioned earlier, into that 139, or I'm sorry, to that community room as an overflow. We'll also be able to route that information out to that foyer area, which is also serving as an overflow. So basically, what that is, is that's your big portable universal control, remote control. And then from the head-end rack, there's also going to be a nuclear panel to, you know, if one were to fail or whatever the case may be, you'll have a backup panel in your head-end rack as well.
Typically, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a reason why you're not using the switcher and the receiver from here that we have?
Are no longer supported. It's actually outdated.
That's not true, because when we got these equipment, it was supposed to be, we knew we were going to move to New City Hall.
Okay.
And we were told that this particular equipment, plus the cameras that we have, they were supposed to be comparable with whatever we go, whatever we do.
Okay, so about two, three weeks ago, I was here, took an inventory of that equipment. I know that the cameras are Panasonic. They are no longer supported by Panasonic. That was confirmed. I know that a lot of the head-end equipment that's going to be in here right now is tied to the broadcast system specifically and is intended to be retrofitted as part of this system separately.
My understanding, you don't have enough experience in broadcasting, and that's the reason why we're not moving the stuff?
I'm sorry, say that again, ma'am.
My knowledge is, I was doing some homework, and your company is not really experienced with broadcasting. So that's one of the reasons.
It's not necessarily, ma'am, that we don't have experience in broadcasting. It's that our understanding is that that was handled by a separate contractor. So what we've did is we've included the necessary inputs and outputs for that system to be able to very seamlessly integrate into ours.
But that doesn't mean it's not comparable. Like, so other companies will be able to use this equipment that we have here. I don't know, nothing is against you. I'm just, that's what we were told when we spent all that money, if any of you remember here, that whatever equipment we put here last three years ago or four years ago, it was supposed to be comparable because we knew we were going to build a new city hall.
Some of the equipment in the head-end is...
Is retrofitting over into, and I believe is either being handled by Comcast or AT&amp;T, I believe.
Well, right. So when you say broadcast, you mean when we're broadcasting out to the public access channel?
Yes.
And also streaming on the internet?
Yes.
Right. So some of that equipment, we're still going to be able to use.
Yes.
Take it from the room here and put it in the AV room at the New City Center.
And it's going to retrofit then and tie into our system to make a seamless endeavor when everything's all said and done, ma'am, yes.
But not the cameras?
Not the cameras, no.
So with the cameras, would you be able to use those cameras on your system? It's just that they're not supported anymore?
Correct, yeah. We could certainly use the cameras, yes. That was actually, I think, mentioned before, that, yeah, we could definitely use these cameras. We would be introducing a lot of different boxes to be able to adapt them to our devices, so there'd be more electronics that I would need to introduce in order to make them connect properly to our devices. connect properly to our devices. And in our mind, more devices means more failure points, more risk of failure. So we took it upon ourselves, uh, based on discussions that we had with the team, to retrofit brand new, state of the art cameras that would retrofit into our system and also interface seamlessly then with, with the, uh, broadcast system head end devices that are being transferred over.
I, I think the confusion, Claudia, if I'm understanding this correctly, when we were told that, that these items would work going forward, it would, was for the Comcast side of things, and since nobody, um, obviously looked into this until lately, as far as all these other elements are, this, this never entered the picture because they didn't even decide this until just lately. And which is why we have to go wireless, so it's caused a whole series of problems because, you know, we were late to the party, is the best way to put it. So even though that might work with Comcast, it's not going to work well with yours, you're going to have to add equipment, which is just like adding extension plugs, there's always-
Yep.
Yeah, and I understand that, unfortunately, I think we were just, once again, given some not so great advice before.
So I, I can kind of elaborate on some of this, um, as far as how we got here, right, to this point and, and to your point, Claudia. Um, so when it was found out that, you know, probably back in November, when I was still working in, in Jim's spot, um, it was found out probably back in November, October maybe at the latest, um, that somebody came in for a speaker bid, right, they were looking for speakers. And, okay, great, so what are the speakers going to do? And the thought process was to take this stuff in there, in the cameras, these microphones, the entire system here with these new speakers and integrate it into the new council chambers. So I looked into it and, and said, hey, I don't know if that's going to work or not. We had a meeting with, um, Ron. Uh, Ron had said, you know, wait a minute here, we're not sure if this is going to work, it may not be compatible, the equipment with the new fiber lines that are out there, so there's a lot of things that, that this gentleman's saying is absolutely correct, it was discussed at these meetings. So when we hired Harbor Contractors, I gave this project to Harbor and said, hey, you guys, um, are in charge of this and you try to find out what is the best, here's division, where are we at? They came back with report and said, you're not there, you are these microphones, that system and some speakers that are being, uh, bid out. So I said, stop all that, don't do any of that, let's go out and get some price quotes and kind of do a design. And so they met with three or four different gentlemen, uh, different companies. They just got doing the County of Will, uh, a four hundred thousand dollar project, um, and met with that particular vendor, they met with these guys, they met with the initial vendor that was talked to a year and a half ago. And they kind of took all the information, they met with the resident who's here today, was very helpful in giving us some ideas on how to proceed. And all of that is a, is accumulation of what these guys are presenting. Yeah, so, so Harbor vetted them, vetted the scope, vetted the equipment, um, and said, hey, it's probably most cost effective not to use these cameras um, to retrofit some of the work or some of the things that are in there, uh, but we need new stuff, um, if we want to have twenty first century technology to make sure that it could be streamed, um, we have the recording systems. My vision to them was you push a button and everything's done, rather than having twelve different things going on at once. And that was kind of, because I'm not an IT person, so that was given all to Jim, Jim took that and ran with it, and that's how we got to where we're at. Um, so the scope of the project was vetted by three or four different companies, not just this company, by three or four different companies. And to my knowledge, they all came back and said, it is difficult to use these cameras, not impossible. It is difficult using all of those, all of those pieces back there because of fiber versus cable versus coax, all the things that are out there. And it's best to go this direction. And then Jim took it over from there, and then these gentlemen, uh, were one of the, were the lowest and the best bid, I guess, from, from a, um, overall scope, so I don't know if that helps at all?
It does, but I, like, the way you said it, because it's just the lowest, I have nothing against it, I'm not saying anything. Lowest is not always the best-
Not always the best, you're absolutely correct.
Correct, sometime you spend, you know, you want to save a quarter and you end up paying a dollar for it. Again, I'm not into technology, I'm not aware-
Neither am I, right.
I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're going to be doing the right thing because we keep making the mistakes over and over and over. And I, if you go back and you pull minutes and it sounded like a broken record, asking questions about where we at, where what's going on. And, and I'm not going to keep going backwards, I understand we have to move forward, we have to pick up the pieces, but it's really frustrating at this point. Like, I called Jim today and I said, I'm nervous about making this decision because I am. You know, I, I'm not educated very well when it comes to technology, I try to do as much possible homework, um, I ask a lot of questions. But we were told, let's go on this because this equipment is going to work, but now it's not going to work. And how do I know down the road, the stuff that you're offering us, you're going to say, oh, you know what, we made another mistake, now we have to add more, more options?
You know what, I'm going to, uh, y- 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 you have incredibly valid points, you have incredibly valid points. And having been in the technology industry the greater part of almost twenty-three years, I could tell you that one of the most challenging things we have as technology providers is that technology always changes. Everything is changing, different connectors, different technology, more high definition, more bandwidth, more this, more that, more this, more that, which makes equipment that you buy five, six, seven years ago tougher to retrofit down the line, you know, so to, to answer your question, I respect your concern, I truly do. And my candid answer to that is that I don't have a guaranteed answer for you on that because we don't know what technology is going to do six, seven, eight years from now. What I know we're doing is that we're doing everything we can to future proof your infrastructure, you know, to provide you a reliable, sturdy, dependable, intuitive solution. Um, that I could look at you straight in the eye and say that that's certainly our intent. Uh, the technology that we are providing, um, one thing I could tell you too is that there are a hundred ways to skin the cat in our industry. We, there's countless numbers of manufacturers that are out there. And one of the bigger challenges we have currently right now is that, you know, yes, there are other contractors out there that do the exact same thing that we're doing right now, but because of chip shortages and everything else that's going on, we're six months away from being able to get the year two, so.
Well, that was another concern that I had, that we're choosing certain equipment because of shortage, because they're behind and we feel, I feel like we are rushing, we will have to do city hall, I just hope we're picking up the right equipment for this.
Is, is, is there, is there a particular vendor that you're concerned about?
No, because some harbor said last week, if I'm not mistaken, he did stand there and said, uh, some of the option was selected because there's shortage and this is what we can put our hands on. And I just want to make sure we're not rushing on making, oh, let's just pick this one because this is available right now and down the road is not going to work. When I said down the road, maybe year two, three, I know seven, eight years, technology changes, I can buy a phone today and next week, Apple's going to bring another new phone.
You got it.
You know, I, I'm aware of that, but we're talking third million dollar here, we're not talking-
No, we understand.
Couple thousand dollars, we're talking a lot of money at this point.
We, we understand.
And I'm just, I am nervous about it, I'm not going to deny you.
It is, again, we completely understand. Um, I mean, I know that there's probably names that are being thrown out and names like Crestron, Extron, there's other, again, there's a dozen ways to, you know-
Well, that was another subject that I wanted to touch on, but I don't want to take away from the presentation.
No, 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 it's, again, it is.
What you're offering us is not even comparable to what other companies they offer.
It is a hundred percent comparable compared to other manufacturers that are out there, ma'am, absolutely, um, so I-
I'll let you go ahead and finish your question.
No, 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 that's, that's absolutely fine, so, I mean, I know that everything, again, kind of bringing this full circle, um, again, there is many ways that we could do this. Um, and I know one of the things that we were trying to do and that we were trying to back into was to be able to hit a timeline that, so a lot of the technology that was chosen, while a hundred percent viable and reputable and backed by big companies, you know, the head end of your equipment is owned by a company called Harmon Carden, which is actually a Samsung company. So, um, you know, that might, that may not have been our first choice, but we, again, we, we weren't just looking at just the solution, we were looking at the timeline that we were trying to achieve it in. And one of the objectives that we were able to achieve is that conservatively speaking, seventy percent of the gear that we have on our proposal, we're going to be able to fulfill much sooner compared to other manufacturers that are giving four to six month lead times right now. And even that's a dart being thrown blindfolded right now when it comes to anything that's happening on the West Coast with, you know, with, with things coming in on big cargo ships and, and, you know, out in California right now. So, again, the technology was certainly backed and, and is certainly reputable, we're not schlepping any sort of off name brands into this solution by any stretch of the imagination, so.
Well, that was one of my major concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, can I ask you a quick question before we move on?
Sure.
Have you done bigger project than city hall?
Yes.
You've done?
Absolutely, absolutely, I mean, my, myself personally, um, I've managed the city of former Glen. I have managed the Village of Carroll Streams, city halls as well. So that's where a lot of my, and a lot of LVS's design experience kind of stemmed from, were those systems that I was involved with over the past, conservatively speaking, three, four years. So, um, I, I oversaw and managed the technology integration, specifically the audio visual in those two specific locations. I could probably name a few others that I've done through Downers Grove earlier in my career, but certainly, this is not my first, personally, not my first project through any sort of village hall or city hall renovation for technology, yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you a question, the cameras are going to be the new, uh, new, uh, council, are they going to be fixed or are they going, could they roam?
Great question, they will be ceiling mounted, three in the back, kind of similar here, one in the front, full pan tilt zoom capability with thirty time optical zoom into the, into certain angles. Plus, there's going to be on the side, a separate intuitive joystick controller, preview monitor and to be able to set up presets for it as well.
When I asked you that question before about the speakers, I didn't mean digital, I meant directional, is what I'm going to say, you've got the two, the two D's.
Oh.
I know they're digital, but I meant directional, you've got to talk to it, you know?
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, I mean-
That's what I want, that's what I wanted to get out of that.
If, if, if you can imagine, you know, my piece of paper or maybe my little calculator here is the microphone, you don't have to go right up to it and talk to it like this. You are able to sit as comfortable as you are in that chair right now and have it serve its, 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 its exact same purpose and intended functionality.
That's what I meant before, I got, I got the D's, which are-
Yes, all good, not a problem.
So you may not be able to answer this question, but maybe you can, maybe somebody can, the, um, tablet that you spoke of that can control all the mics, all of this, all of that, um, who's going to be operating that?
So we will be programming it, we will be commissioning it, testing it and-
I mean, at each meeting?
At each meeting, I believe it's going to be-
It'd be Ron.
Ron and the other-
So he's going to be doing that along with all the cameras and all the other stuff here?
Right, he'll be doing the same thing that he's doing now, just with new equipment.
And how many cameras are going to be in that room?
Four total.
Just like we have here. So Ron will be operating four cameras, pan and tilt, he can preset the cameras, you know, with a, a certain, uh, shot, so to speak, and press a button, it'll automatically move, you know, to, to that position.
I do know.
So it'll be more automated, I think, than what we have now.
The goal was to make his life easier, I think was ultimately what it was.
But it gives you the flexibility of moving the cameras, which these don't do.
Correct.
And when we met last week, what was it, on Thursday, uh, Tim Stinet, Ron Romero, Kirk and Brian and myself met with, uh, Eric, and we went over, uh, the proposal, we met at the city center and we walked through some of the conference rooms and we walked through, uh, the council chambers and looked at everything and talked through it. And both Tim and Ron were satisfied with what we're going to do, some suggestions were made, that, you know, we made some tweaks. The original proposal had three cameras in the council chambers.
Three cam, yeah.
It was Ron's suggestion that we add a fourth.
Yep.
Uh, so that's what we're doing. Um, so we did make a couple tweaks, that's why the proposal you have in front of you today was updated from our meeting on Thursday.
Eric, how about like long term, long term support? I mean, I know you're close, but can we knock on your door every day if we have, uh, have, have issues?
Please do, please do, please do, come on down, no, no, um, uh, no, no.
I'm sure it's Eric's fault.
Yeah. Um, obviously, there, the, come, if anything breaks, and, and again, it's electronics, electronics do things that people otherwise can't predict, not even I can predict. Um, there is a dedicated help desk, support email that the people in charge will be able to ring and get us instantly with a solid response, um, you know, certainly come day one to, um, we intend to fully support the first full, few meetings onsite to make sure that the confidence level is there, that the technology is working as it should. Um, one thing that's always considerably tough when it comes to technology integrations, the, the last twenty percent of the job is typically what takes about eighty percent of the time. Um, there's going to be some fine tuning, there is going to be some, uh, uh, that didn't work right, or that wasn't quite what we wanted it to do, that didn't sound right, that sort of thing like that. We're here for the long haul, please understand that, this is not a wham bam, we're done, we're out and you'll never see us again. This is a long term partnership that we have viewed it as. Um, last Thursday, as Jim mentioned, that was, I think, our fourth or fifth meeting that we've had, um, drilling down into what this solution is intended to be. I think we refined it, I think, a, you know, total of three or four times now since, you know, in an effort to try to really hit the nail squarely. Um, but we also made it very crystal clear to those that we were working with that we're not here to nickel and dime, we're not here to uh, beat you guys up for every little change that comes down the, the rope here, we're treating this as a partnership, we want to make sure that we're, this is right for you guys, not just in the immediate, but in the long term, and when stuff breaks, we'll be here.
You're on recorded, just so you know, you said that, so we'll be playing that over and over.
Stamp it.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have two in-house- people to help support the system as well with Ron and Tim now, of course. You know, they're not going to be able to do, say, the hard wiring and that type of thing, but they're going to get trained on the system, they're going to know how to operate it, you know, software updates and, you know, configure things, they'll be able to do that, and we have LVS just on the road whenever we need them.
And then outlined, I think, for next fix till fiscal year two, we did, uh, as part of this proposal, uh, provide proposals and outlines for ongoing maintenance for not just the next year, but the next two, three, four years as well. Um, you know, obviously, with any sizable investment such as this, you know, this is like buying a very expensive car, in some cases, maybe three or four very expensive cars. And like anything else, you know, cars need maintenance, right, you've got to be able to kind of make sure, run the system through the paces, um, put some oil in it, update some firmwares, update some softwares. So we have provided, uh, separate of this proposal, but we have, it does include the pricing though of a, uh, first, second and third year maintenance package to make sure that we're keeping that system up and running at top level for you guys. Making sure you guys have the, the latest and greatest, uh, feature sets of the system as well, so.
Can I ask why that would be a first, second, third year maintenance versus second, third, and fourth? Assuming you're going to be there to do, require maintenance, maintenance during that first year?
That's actually a great question, so our standard, the LVS is, and this is actually pretty common in, uh, uh, the AV industry as a whole. Um, I could very easily put a couple of maintenance visits as part of the base package, most AV integrators, um, a lot of people don't choose not to do it, so we break it out optionally. What you will have from us included in your package in your first year is support for all the workmanship, it doesn't necessarily include all maintenance. So, um, but if something does break, we're going to be here for you for a period of one year after we get successful sign off, so.
So could this be restructured where you're, where, for council's consideration, we'd be looking at a enhanced maintenance program in which your first year is included?
Absolutely.
And the price, and then, uh, have us consider years two, three and four?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you suggesting the first year be added to the base price?
What I'm saying, not added to the base price, but be included in the base price.
So the base price would remain at?
Correct, but the first year, assuming there's going to be very little maintenance and that you guys are going to be in and out of there, that, that you submit a proposal for years two, three and four and you include year one.
We could, we will look into that and certainly get back to Jim on that, yes.
My expectation is be included in that, in that base system, that's all I got.
Okay.
It's like when you buy a washer and dryer, you got a twelve year warranty on it, you buy an extended one, it picks up in year two.
Yeah, you, you buy a plant, they guarantee for the first year and you pay for the insurance.
Or when you buy a car and they give you free oil change for a couple of years, you know, so.
Yeah, yep, some cars do, some cars don't.
Looking for free oil change, I guess, is what we're saying.
Understood, loud and clear, sir.
Very good point, Sean.
Eric, everything I've heard here sounds great. Uh, how long will it take you to install this and make it functional in that building after it gets approved here?
That is a very good question. That is a very good question. Realistically speaking, I am three to four weeks to procure my equipment and getting it in here. We're going to be onsite as soon as we possibly can, roughing in. Our objective here is with, I think the target was to try to hit mid-April was what was, is the objective that we were trying to hit. I can't guarantee that just yet, but again, the goal is as soon as humanly possible. I know that from a labor hours perspective and a breakdown of what needs to be done, I think the overall project cycle was about five to six weeks, start to finish, if we were to just go full bore at it. So.
Awesome. Thanks.
So, that pretty much concludes anything unless there's any other questions that I could help answer for you guys.
Any other questions?
We're here because we know that the money that you're, that's being placed in front of you, you've got to have the confidence. And we wanted to make sure you guys do, you know, conversations don't need to end here tonight. If there's any other questions that pop up, we're here. So.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. Nice presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, they have to increase the price.
No.
In regards to this? All right. I would be looking for a motion, a resolution awarding the city center audio visual contract, Low Voltage Solutions Incorporated, as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I guess my question is, the point Glenn brought up, how are we able to vote on that without a response?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, we've got the proposal in front of us, so I don't know that we're in a position to negotiate a change to the.
Well, then, we're probably not in a position.
I'm talking right now.
You'll include first year's maintenance.
See how he's, thank you, Eric.
Yes. I can come up to the microphone and say it too, just so it's on the record. LVS will include maintenance in the first year. Okay?
So, then with the two, three, and four, how, when can they exercise that option if that's not on the table yet for the fourth year?
Whenever they so choose to.
So, I think that can be any time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that can be subsequent or, yes, different years, different fiscals.
Right.
So, we're amending that to say year two, then year three, prior to the ending of year two, and year four prior to the ending of year, changing those numbers on the graph.
My assumption would be is that we'd be including the first year of maintenance.
Right.
Within that original contract price. Those years two, three, and four, you, you don't have to vote on this evening, but that could be included in upcoming budgets. So, it'd be voting on the initial contract with hopefully the addendum to add that first year maintenance.
So, in essence, what they'd be doing is striking a line through year one.
And including it in the base, in the base number that Jim outlined this evening. Yes, sir.
To Alderman Kubal, is that acceptable to your motion for that amendment?
I'm sorry.
Is the amendment as presented, with striking the first year, the first year being included in the contract, was that acceptable to your motion?
I'll still make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have motion by Alderman Kubal, seconded by Alderman person Overland. Questions or comments?
I just, I'm going to say that, you know, repeatedly, this project has gotten to be so disappointing with how some of these things are ending up. And I feel like now we may be settling for not the greatest technology, just because we want to get it done. And that worries me. The wireless microphones worry me. Changing batteries, you know, during a meeting or whatever, you can hear somebody because of it. And I know it's, we're at the point where there's not much we can do about it. But I just feel like we still don't have some of the straight answers we're looking for regarding what we're, you know, what we're doing his best. This is a big contract. You know, we have repairs to do all throughout the city, and when we're talking $300,000, it's just hard to, hard to swallow. Not really getting too much input besides what we've been presented with tonight. There's been really no other professional input on this. I know Tim just started, and Ron, we have his input, but I haven't heard from Ron either. So, I just, I'm hesitant on voting on this tonight.
Nate, I was concerned about the microphone, just like you. I talked to Ron. I don't know if Ron can come up and, and speak into this in regard to batteries, and he said it's part of his, his job to change and make sure the batteries are in place. I don't know, can he, can he come up?
Yeah, he can come up.
Let me look him up.
There he is.
There he is.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Heard everything you said.
Well, because of wires.
Yeah.
So, my concern is this. From the get-go, we were asked when Heather was here, can we move the gear over there? We had an eye to the future to say that we want to get the 4K cameras in here. We wanted the latest and greatest in equipment. We had an update just a few years ago through another company that updated a lot of the gear that's in here right now that is movable. The issue that we face is when we move to the other location, we go from coax, if you remember the old TVs with coax. That's what we're using here, and that's why it looks so grainy that we have here. The line goes from here down to where Totens is, and there's an amplifier, just like you used to have on the back of your TV back in the day. When that goes out, we get grainy pictures like this. At the new place, we go to, to fiber optics. The, the gear is still the same here, but the encoders and decoders, that's what sends the signal from here to Comcast. That changes because it's a different technology. I want to be clear on a couple of things, because I hear my name kind of coming up once in a while that I've agreed on certain things. I've always raised the concern that, that we're, there's a difference. What they've presented is a really good plan for AV, but we still have questions on how we connect broadcast or narrowcast in this case, because we're broadcasting out to the community. There's some questions about, and let me give you an example. The, we had a little scope creep because originally we said, here's what we want to do. And when this all got put together, then we were introduced with, oh, we want to put monitors on the wall. Okay, we're going to connect what to that? A computer. How do we show that for the people to see here and to do broadcast? We're not sure yet. What about microphones on the table? That microphone has to feed the overhead speakers. It has to go to a audio recorder, and it has to go to broadcast. How do we do that? I don't know that we have the answer complete for that yet. We mentioned a recorder, but we've not talked about our server, which is specific to cable. There are a couple of pieces of equipment in there that are specific. That's how I program. In other words, when I'm not here every Tuesday, you see a twos and eights, the city council meeting. That's a specific piece of gear that you can't replace with just anything. We went to the manufacturer for that. They're the ones who recommended the company that did the last upgrade for us and put that information in there, or put the gear in there. They also did a flow chart to show us how everything in the back of that, in the room has been connected. The unfortunate thing is, when this started, it was not much more than a PowerPoint presentation going into an encoder. Since then, there's been updates. The cable management is terrible there because we've just added another piece of equipment. We've just done other things. The hope was that when we moved to the new place, that we start to streamline. To their point, very good point, we don't want to introduce any more failure points. We don't want to put adapters into adapters into splitters into things like that. We want to streamline a lot of that. And I was hoping that that's what we were going to do in there. As I mentioned before, a lot of AV things are real, I'm not even concerned so much with the microphones because I've used those in other environments with other locations. That's not a, necessarily a bad thing to use. I know there's other cities that does use the wireless as well. I am concerned, though, I don't know, maybe it's a question you can answer. You had, they had asked about what other cities you had worked with. I would ask how many other applications included narrowcast or broadcasting, and what servers did they use for those locations? That's my concern. Like, how, how do we connect AV to broadcast is my concern. Any questions?
Did you, with his question, did you incorporate AV in broadcast?
Ron, I think you have a problem.
Yeah, that's the wrong meeting. Yeah.
Jim, it seems like we still have a lot of questions. We, why we don't table this? Like, we tried to do a work session where we can bring everybody, including Ron. Like, he's running a meeting, now we moved to different meeting.
Paul, do you have answers?
Yeah, I mean, the, the understanding was on LVS's side is that the broadcast elements would integrate into our system. Therefore, we have provisioned the, what we believe is the necessary inputs, outputs to be able to retrofit the gear that is being transferred over to that system. How and what that scope is, is not currently included within our scope. It was our understanding that that was being handled by a, a separate contract at that point. So.
See, this is kind of my fear, is that we have all this stuff, but then it's maybe state-of-the-art here at our dais, but then it's not communicating with every other aspect of what we need to do. And I, I feel like just getting in the room together, Ron and Tim, just to hammer this stuff out so we're all on the same page, even if it means that we ideally probably have to spend more money. At least, we're doing it right the first time. And if we can go out to Channel Six or YouTube, you know, the very first meeting that we have at the new city center.
Who would we need to have in here from Comcast?
I have no idea.
We have connections, we've had meetings, in fact, I've been contacted by Comcast several times and forward that information on Comcast, and we also broadcast on AT&amp;T. Those are two different encoders and decoders.
Right.
And they both, we've reached out to them, they've reached out, they've been trying to be included, and it's, I don't know that they've been included. I don't know that they've been talked to, because I keep getting calls back from them or emails back from them saying what's going on. So.
I can tell you Comcast, when we met Comcast, when you and I met with, you know, so Comcast has been contacted. This was back in November. Ed Clark was in charge of that after we had the change over at the building. So, Comcast has been contacted. They have been part of the entire process. So.
So, to be clear, the people that are contacting me are the ones that do specifically municipalities for the, it's not the same guys that fix your TV or install?
Right, right.
These are people who do broadcast. They're the ones who contact.
Those are the people that have been talked to, yes.
Okay.
Well, they're the ones that are now installing the fiber line.
That is correct.
Right.
Same guys.
Well, what I can do is I'll have another meeting with, we'll get together internally again with Tim, and we'll reach out to Comcast and AT&amp;T and talk through all these things. We'll get Ron there, and we'll talk through all this and see what we can put together as far as answering those questions.
Well, I think it's unfortunate that we're at this, this juncture, but once again, it's because we didn't start this correctly. We did not, we should have had all these meetings and all this before the building went up. We should have known what we were going to do where the wired, we wouldn't be in the position of needing wireless mics and all these other things if this were, I'm not blaming you, please, don't think I'm blaming anybody here. I'm just saying, once again, we didn't have the right captain on the ship, and that now we're, now we're backed against the wall. But I agree with what they're saying. If we don't know if A is going to work with B with C, then we're just going to find ourselves down the road having equipment that doesn't work and saying, why did we do that?
And that's why we need to table this, so we can do all our homework correctly and come again, bring everybody that is going to be included in this meeting, like Ron, like Tim.
Comcast.
Even Comcast, AT, even you have to bring, no offense again to you, even you have to bring another opinion. I mean, that's, that's my take. Do it right. We can't keep going backwards. We have to move forward. How we move forward, we have to move forward the right way. So, by getting all the information gathered, then we can make the decision. We can all, you can tell this sense, nobody wanted to make a motion.
Well, there is a motion and a second.
I'll rescind my second.
It's up to Alderman Kubal right now.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you can tell that how everybody was nervous, but not voting. So, you're probably not going to pass through tonight. So, it's better to send it back.
Either the motion gets withdrawn, or the second gets withdrawn.
I already did.
Or you have to, to vote on the motion. That's to Alderman Kubal.
Once again, I rescind my second.
Okay.
Is there, is there an opportunity, instead of actually tabling it for two weeks, if we were to, I know we've done it before, not recently, but recess tonight's meeting and then continue it next Monday where we could actually have a vote on it?
It's a, it's a work session.
Yeah.
Get the votes of the agenda.
Yeah.
I think we need to have a work session with this, this topic.
We need to have all the parties here.
So, if we were to set it up for next week on 15th.
Work session, is it a heavy load, or is it not a heavy load?
Not yet, I don't know.
I think the mayor makes a good point.
I got a question.
If you can get all the parties together, it's going to be.
Correct.
But it would still be a nice opportunity to be able to actually vote on it that evening if we could.
What is that timeline with completion of this project?
Set earlier phones.
So, no, I mean, in relation to the opening of, or projected opening of the new city hall, having everything in place. So, I know he said four to six weeks on, he's waiting on equipment and getting his team over there and whatnot. But I, I asked because we're kind of late in the game, and I think, I think he's like the, their company is like the, I think, the second or third company that we kind of asked to come and look at this project because of what's in place now that's not, that's not sufficient for what we're trying to do. If, if it's possible to get low voltage and Comcast, and I think AT&amp;T and Ron and, you know, Mickey Mouse, whoever else got to come, if we can get them in the room and, and get some, some things definitely accomplished on moving forward, can we, can we get back into a timeline that's suitable for not only the council, but the citizens of Crest Hills to finally see some closure on it?
Specifically for the AV system?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I don't know yet what the timeline's going to be, but obviously, it has to be up and running before we can move in the city center.
Because I know, I remember Chief Clark, he had a meeting about, I think, the audio visual over on the, on the police side, and, you know, we're, we're kind of spinning with audio visual, and we, we, we have this company, which is fortunately for us, right in our backyard. And, and I think we, we all, we all want the thing to be done right, but I think we have to consider a timeline that's in place too, or create a timeline to, to be in place to get some things accomplished. You know, we don't want to tear stuff apart, so, so they're kind of limited as to how do you go about getting it done without tearing things apart. It's kind of, it's puzzling. I, I, I hear everybody's concerns, and I have concerns as well, but I also want to get some closure on this city hall thing.
You know, we can always have a meeting in the middle of the week, have a special work session. We don't have to wait till next Monday to do it. I mean, if you get this equipment in, is it all here ready, or is it on its way here, or is it equipped? You could use other places to get it or something?
No, we would not be releasing this until we had.
That's the biggest problem. We get all the equipment here at one time so you can do the work, you know. Hold it back for another week, is that going to hurt the equipment? Is it, is it still going to come? Are you going to have it? Are you worried about not being able to use it for us or something? You know, there's a lot of questions being asked.
It's a, it's a fair statement. I mean, you know, certainly, it's.
It's a, it's a fair statement, I mean, you know, certainly, it's, every week that goes by, it's another week that doesn't, you know, obviously the, you know, action isn't being taken. I know that a lot of the lead time information that we have dug into throughout this proposal phase has been updated along the way. Lead times are not improving necessarily, but, you know, for the most, in many cases, they're not necessarily getting any worse just yet either. But that's an unpredictable factor that we don't know yet either. I mean, unfortunately, with the thousands, hundreds of thousands of manufacturers that we deal with, it's hard to keep a finger on all of their various lead times. What I can tell you is that, again, conservatively speaking, 70% of the stuff that we have proposed as part of this system is currently readily available.
Now, if we change something, we want something different, add something to it, will that equipment still fit in with the other one, or don't you know that yet?
We, we don't know that yet.
Is it what, time changes every half hour?
Well, the, again, the X-factor to us is the unknown of the integration as it ties into the broadcast system. We are knowledgeable enough to know and understand that there is video feeds and audio feeds that are likely to tie into this system, and we have provisioned that connectivity, that input, that output, if you will, for whatever the system is that is going to be retrofitted on the broadcast side. The challenge that low voltage solutions has had is that we don't even know what that equipment is either. We have the fourth site to be able to leave the ins and outs available. Thank you very much, sorry. I should have come to the podium, my apologies. We did have the fourth site to provision necessary ins and outs to be able to, what we hope would adapt to that system. The problem is, is like, like everybody else here in this room, we just don't know what that, that system is, or how it's connected.
Jim, now, maybe I'm not the world's expert on audiovisual, but Joliet has, has their TV, they go to Comcast, they do all this, sure, would all these other municipalities already do this? Is it too far of a stretch of our imagination to maybe give a little wringing to the people that run their AV and say, you know, who, what did you do, who, you know, how did you do this? I mean, I don't think they're going to hang the phone up on us.
We could do that, I'd rather talk directly to AT&amp;T and Comcast.
Well, I think we need to do that too, but I'm just saying, we don't need to reinvent the wheel so much as we need to adapt the wheel for us. But these other municipalities have all done this, so it's not like it's unheard of.
No, I know.
Now, that connectivity will never be a part of your scope, correct?
Not really, no.
You know, partners could be our fault too, we should have got into this about a year ago.
Two years.
As the building was being done, get it going, get all the bugs out of it that we could have.
Absolutely.
Last minute, we've got to get it done, and right now, you know, electronics don't work like that.
All right, first of all, to Alderman Kubal, are you willing to rescind your?
I will rescind it, yes, I'll rescind my motion.
Alderman Overland, you already said you would rescind your second, okay? I would suggest that we get all the, all the, all the people that are needed together at a meeting that is the lone agenda item for that evening. We'll have to pick the date, make sure that everybody's available, we can certainly organize that. I would suggest that we table this, this resolution for awarding to the city center, and we move forward at a work session where we could discuss this in detail. Fair enough, I would ask for a motion to table.
So moved, a second.
Can I ask you? Say, say we do pass this here, can we pass this here?
It's not, there's not a motion to table, John.
I said that, let's move on.
I would not recommend.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Do we need to do the roll call before rescinding?
Um, no, I think it's on the record.
All right, we have a motion to table this topic by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Eric.
Okay, we'll, let's move forward with getting all the key people here for a work session, a lone topic of that, for that evening. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Any, thanks, Eric and Justin.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I do want us to consider if we get all the things worked out, a possible special meeting, so we can come to an agreement, we can vote on this and move forward before two weeks.
Correct. Okay, anything else from you, Jim?
I was just mentioning to Jim, I mean, you don't have to make it a work session, you could make a special meeting, it's a regular city council meeting, with the only topic being this item, and if all the questions are answered to your satisfaction, you want to move forward on it, you can vote on it that night.
Okay.
It's going to be a special meeting.
That could be next Monday.
You don't have to call it a work session.
We've done that years ago, we did it years ago, I remember doing that.
And it doesn't have to be on Monday night.
Let's move on.
As long as you post a special meeting, you can have it on Monday night.
Correct.
Okay, any questions for city administrator? All right, thanks, Jim. Moving on, Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Seager. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The first agenda item I have for you is the intergovernmental agreement with Will County regarding the lighted street signs. This will allow the city to put the lighted street signs on Weber Road for the two newly named roads.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Overland for the intergovernmental agreement with Will County regarding the lighted street signs. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1895.
The next item is an ordinance repealing and replacing Title 13, limitations on sprinkler devices with a new chapter 1306, water conservation. This was presented at the last work session.
So moved, second. We have a motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert in regards to the sprinkling system. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1895.
The next.
I'm sorry, that's going to be 1896.
The next ordinance amends provisions of 13, Chapter 24, the water and sewer rates. These directly reflect the Burns and McDonald's suggestions that were talked about at a few work sessions ago, with the water and sewer rates to cover the incoming capital charges that we shall be seeing.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, questioned by Alderman Jefferson for an ordinance amending the sewer and water rates in regards to Lake Michigan water. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1897.
The next is a resolution approving engagement letter with the city of Crest Hill and Chapman and Cutler. Chapman and Cutler will be our bond counsel for the West Plant improvement projects. This is a not-to-exceed contract for $55,000.
So moved, presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert for the Chapman and Cutler engagement letter. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1142.
The last item I have before you is a resolution approving agreement between the city of Crest Hill and Williams Brothers for the emergency removal of the West Plant digester lid. This was, this did come in at $51,000, and I did just find out this afternoon it will be covered by insurance.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for the approval of the emergency repairs to the West Plant digester lid. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1143.
That is all I have for the city, we'd have to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of public works? Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on, city engineer. City engineer Ron Wedeman's here. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. First item I have is for the approval tonight of a resolution of two proposals from MEED Electric. The first proposal is to furnish and install cabinet equipment for the amount of $23,566.70. The second is for video detection upgrade for the amount of $42,259.35. Again, this work is to be paid out of our current MFT funds. The only comment I want to make to the resolution is change the reference to Paranar to Lenkavinsky Drive.
So moved, second. Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert for a resolution approving proposals by MEED Incorporated for Caton Farm and Lenkavinsky Drive traffic signal repair and upgrade. This was also discussed last Monday night at the work session. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm just curious, several of these had this on, what was the point of the last page saying in Exhibit A, and all these documents?
Technically, they're probably, they're referencing my memo with the proposal.
Says all these documents, all these things you have displayed, seems kind of.
I think they were out of order in the packet, I think Exhibit A should be the documents that immediately preceded Resolution 1145.
Correct, yeah. Should have been Resolution first with my memo and everything behind it, Exhibit A.
Okey-dokey.
Second item I have is.
Do we have a roll call?
No, we have a motion, we need a motion, everything.
We had a motion.
I made them.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1144.
The second item I have is for the installation of the LED street name signs. Again, a proposal from MEED to do this work for $24,985.90, so I'm looking for approval.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
I guess she can't.
Do you have anything else to add there?
Nope.
Make up time, Mark.
Nope.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Overland, I heard about three seconds, I'll go with Alderman Dyke, I heard that one, for the approving of proposal by MEED for the LED streetlights installation. Questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, just one, one comment. I, I think we should continue to look into the Weber Road and City Center Boulevard intersection there, to see if we can get that fourth sign up where it should be. Thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1145.
That's all I have, there's going to be is any questions?
Okay, any questions of city engineer?
Thank you, Mark.
All right, thanks, Ron. Community development, Steve Golden, good evening, Steve.
I do have a lengthy report, but I'll make it short.
Just one quick, I had four or five things here, but just wanted to, just wanted to
counsel the update on. We met with a developer that owns the southeast corner of the industrial park, southeast corner in industrial park on Caton Farm and Weber, right by the gymnastics, and he's got two vacant lots adjacent to the railroad tracks. We told the developer that he needs to partner with the city regarding adding a second entrance into that. Right now, there's only one entrance that goes on to Caton Farm. He'd also want to build metal buildings. We told him that metal buildings are no longer appropriate here in Crest Hill. We asked him to partner with us, and we continue to work through those, those issues. But we believe that, Maureen and I met, we believe it is imperative that you have a second entrance going out there, because right now, in order to get into the gymnastics, you have to go through the industrial area to get to that building. And so we talked about getting a second entrance directly to the north of the gymnastics area on that vacant land, right on the east property line. So that's where we're at. Had several other meetings with developers, and I won't bore you, we'll put it in paper. So that's my report.
Well, you never bore us.
All right, so, just Gas and Wash, we met with Gas and Wash, they want to move as quick as possible. We did say that we want a development agreement that ties into the timeframe when the strip mall is going to be built. They agreed to a timeframe, so Jim and I will be working on a development agreement with them, present it to the council, and Robinson Engineering will be doing the survey for the right of way here at, in front of the property that the state owns. Of course, we had Maureen, that way, of course, Maureen contacted the state, and we asked for a copy of their legal description, and they have no record of the legal description of this property. So we have to create it ourselves in order to get it transferred to the city of Crest Hill. So Robinson's working on that. And then, Mike and I met with, Mike, excuse me, Chris Bajin and I met, finalizing the sales contract here. Jim's made some comments on it, the comments went back to Chris, and hopefully we'll present that in two weeks of the sales contract to the council. What Jim had recommended, and Maureen recommended, is that we have some exclusions on different commercial things we don't want, such as massage parlors, or, you know, just different things, smoke shops, and, you know, different things we want to prohibit from coming in on this corner. And so we made some suggestions, and they'll be put into the agreement as well. So those are things that we're working on. That's it.
Okay, any questions of community development? All right, thanks, Steve. Police department, we have with us tonight our Deputy Chief, Jason O'Fiole, good evening, Jason.
Good evening, everyone. There are no agenda items that we have on, for anyone, and the police activity report is in, is in your packet as well, I'll be underwriting any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions of police? All right, great report, Jason. Great report, Jason. Moving on to the mayor's report. I have no agenda items. I just have three announcements. The City of Crestille has joined with our state Senator Meg Capel for the use of the Mobile Secretary of State, Mobile Secretary of State event on August 13th between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at our new city hall. So a lot of services will be available for individuals, renewing driver's licenses, license plate stickers, everything else. So please mark that date in your calendar. The second one with St. Patrick's Day, a little over one week away. For our ninth, our ninth year now, we will be sending out the rebate checks, the property tax rebate checks, which is a rebate on 25% of the municipal portion of your property tax bill if you filled out the proper paperwork last fall. Those will be going in the mail on March 16th, so you should be receiving your property tax rebate check on or about St. Patrick's Day, March 17th. And the last item that I have, just wishing everybody to have a responsible, safe, and a very enjoyable St. Patrick's Day. With that, I'll entertain any questions you may have with myself. Hearing none, we'll move on to the city clerk's report. Our city clerk, Christine Burchay Hall. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. I have nothing to report.
Any questions of city clerk? Thanks, Chris. Our city treasurer's report, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa, would you like to end with the first item? Would you like me to? Would you like me to handle the resolution on the audit?
Because you have it also. Okay. So we're giving everyone. So tonight, we're looking for a motion for revocation of one of Rogers, Duran, and Ruzon LLC, not to exceed $38,750, to perform city phase-up review at 2022.
So moved. Just presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Giselle, for a resolution approving an audit engagement letter by and between the City of Crestille, Will County, Illinois, and Wimmer Rogers, Duran, and Ruzon LLC. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1146.
I thank you all. As a reminder, they've done an incredible job for us in years past. However, next year, we're going to send out an RFP, kind of cast a little net there to see what is available and at what price, but it has no reflection on their performance to date. So, thanks, Lee, for submitting that. Other than that, I'd just like to report the regular overtime payroll from February 14th, 2022 through the 27th of February, 2022, in the amount of $241,929.91. I seek a motion for approval on our list of bills, which during that same timeframe totaled $696,654.52.
So moved. Just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I thank you all. Take any questions if you have them.
Questions of city treasurer?
I have a request. I'm not sure if this is to the treasurer or to you. Probably most likely to you, Lisa. Can I get the financial update for our city center? Where we at so far?
Actually, did you have a little check in this with me? So for city center, so you want to know the amount that has been spent? Very well. So the amount that has been spent year-to-date as of right now is $14,256,357.56. That does include the land purchase of $1,166,000. Okay. So, if you might give me a copy when you can? Sure, sure. Sure. Did you have any other questions as far as...
No, I'm just curious, like, where we budgeted? Where we at? That's what I would like to know. Where we budgeted? Where we at? And how much was left to go off?
So, what I did was, I went back, and I listened to one of the meetings when Nick presented. So Nick had presented council with the original budget that did not include the land purchase of $13,500. But then he also came back and said he thought that he might be 7% over that amount. So if you factor that 7% in, the total building budget itself without the land would be $14,445,450. So if you took that compared to what we've currently spent, that would be $1,294,642.44 left to spend. If he was going to stay on track with that original, 13.5 plus the 7% overage. So Jim's been working with Harbor as far as trying to put together a better estimate of what we still have left.
Right. As you recall, we engaged Harbor to go through all the contracts and the paperwork and do a comparison of what was budgeted, what was contracted with the subcontractors, what's been paid out, which orders are there, and what's remaining to be paid out. They're still going through those documents. There's a lot of documents that, you know, they had difficulty finding, so they're sorting through them and putting together that list. So once they have all that together, we'll have a better sense of how much is left.
Can you, when you get all that, I know you have a lot, and you played, wait, can you just give us an update of what's going on financially?
So you're only including what's been paid out? So any of the items you listed now that weren't paid are not included?
So anything that's been encumbered for work that's already been done, hasn't yet paid, that is not included here, or anything that's yet to be...
And we're looking at over 300 here on this little party tonight. So something tells me we're going to be over.
Well, a couple of things to consider, too, is that we had, I believe, in part of that budget that you, or the amount that you have, is the purchase of the land for the...
She subtracted that.
Well, we also had the actual price of the property itself. Is that accurate?
You're talking about the sale of this land? Or you're talking about the purchase of the land?
Okay. We have the purchase of the land over there. Did we allocate some additional money within that budget for the park, or is that...
This is strictly just city...
Strictly for that building.
Right.
So my assumption is that what you're looking to be provided with would be the spend to date, the encumbered amounts, as well as what we see as projected costs, and just see what our spread is from what we originally budgeted to what we expect to spend. To the best of our knowledge, I mean, it's going to be, I think we put that together in a reasonable way that's going to be less than 100% accurate for the information we know. And then we also should have at a discussion, perhaps a work session, I know we're going to be clobbered on the next one, but we should go over the Public Works Building, where we're at on that, where we're at with Harbor as far as like our lien waivers, where we went with budget on that, as well as, I think we need to put that into context as far as what we proposed to do over at Public Works Building versus what we got and what it cost